The Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning, everyone. I'll ask Commissioner Mason to make the acknowledgement of country this morning.
Thank you. I wish to pay my respects and acknowledge the First Nations people of the lands on which the Royal Commission is sitting today. We acknowledge the Arundel people, the traditional owners and custodians of Mabantuwa or Ellis Springs. We recognise the Wurundjeri people of the Paula nation where the city of Melbourne is now situated. We recognise the Gadigal people of the Eora nation, the traditional custodians of the land on which the city of Sydney is now located. And we acknowledge and pay respect to the Nunaw people whose land is now where the city of Canberra is located. We also wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the various lands in which you are all virtually appearing from, any First Nations peoples who are participating in this hearing, and those First Nations peoples who also identify as LGBTIQA+ including our sister girls and brother boys. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Yes, Mrs.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning and good morning to everyone following the proceeding. We turn to the final panel, which will be part of the public aspect of this hearing. And this morning, we're going to touch upon the issues of sexual and reproductive rights for women and girls with disability. Some of the material that we may cover today may be distressing for some people. And I'll just ask now for the relevant contact numbers for people to contact if they feel they need to speak to someone in relation to the information they hear today. So Commissioners, you'll see that the contact numbers are up on the screen. So witnesses for this panel are Ms. Caroline Fromada and Dr. Linda Steele. And I'll just wait till I can see them on the screen. And there they are. Good morning. Thank you very much for joining us. So Ms. Fromada is in Tasmania, in Hobart, and Dr. Steele is in Sydney. Now, Commissioners, a copy of their CVs and their extensive experience in advocacy, writing and research for women and girls with disability are in the tender bundle material. And I think we've decided that we're not going to spend a lot of time telling you about what they've done, but they're really keen to tell you about what they presently do and the issues relevant for this proceeding. So can I just check with Ms. Fromada and Dr. Steele? First, are you happy if we use first names?
Yes.
And secondly, are you happy to avoid long introductions?
Very much so.
To get straight into the topic, so.
Just before we do that, can I welcome both of you? And thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. If at any time you want to take a short break, please let us know and that can be arranged. In order to allow you to know where everybody is, because we're scattered all over the place, Commissioner Galbally is in Melbourne, Commissioner Bennett is in Canberra, Commissioner Mason is in Ellis Springs, I am in the Sydney hearing room, as is Ms. Eastman. So that is where we all are. I now ask Ms. Eastman to continue. Thank you.
Now, I want to start, we've used a lot of expressions and terms in the course of the hearing over yesterday, and we will again today. And when we're talking about sexual and reproductive rights, and sexual and reproductive rights of women and girls with disability, I want to make sure that for the conversation that we're about to have, that we're all clear about what are we talking about. So Caroline, I'll start with you, and I'll just preface this by saying, some of the material you've provided to the Royal Commission is a statement from Women with Disability Australia about sexual and reproductive rights. And it very, very helpfully sets out all of the relevant international human rights law standards that talk about these rights. But I'm really keen today to move from what the UN says and what's in a treaty to let's talk about what it means for women and girls with disability on the ground, in the day-to-day, every lives of women. So what are sexual and reproductive rights and what are we going to be talking about this morning?
Well, sexual and reproductive rights are inherent to everybody. It's an absolute fundamental human right. So essentially, it's about the right of everybody to make their own choices about their bodies, to have full control over their body, their sexuality, their health, relationships, if and when to get married or not, if and when to have children or not, without any form of discrimination, coercion or violence. So I think at the heart of sexual and reproductive rights is essentially about individual choice. So the right of all women to actually make decisions about and choices, informed choices about their own bodies and what happens to them.
So sexual and reproductive rights also really fundamentally about who we are as human beings, the choices that we make in our lives, the way in which we want to present and our identities. And some of that's going to be very public and some of that's going to be really private. And when you talk about that choice, it's sometimes the choice, isn't it, as to what's in the public side of our lives and identity and the things that we want to keep in our private and personal spaces. Is that important to think about when we talk about sexual and reproductive rights? And I'm just really open this up for a conversation. So Linda, feel free to jump in. And Caroline, I really am keen to hear from both of you, so that's a big conversation.
I think that sometimes when people talk about sex and reproductive rights, they focus very much on reproductive rights, whereas sexual rights are very important as well because sexual rights aren't necessarily about reproduction, although they can be. So sexual rights are about making sure that everybody can encompass sexual activity, you know, sexual orientation, pleasure, intimacy, all those types of things, the need to feel loved and be loved. And that is different for everybody. And it is very personal. And so although sexual and reproductive rights are interrelated, you know, it's very important to understand sexual rights on their own, if that makes sense.
Now, I can just see Linda's dropped off the screen, but we'll keep going and I hope she'll pop back.
There was a message that came up about a fire drill or something.
Oh, no.
Right. Caroline, you may have been following the proceeding yesterday, and we talked about a lot of issues in terms of violence and abuse of women and girls with disability. And questions of violence and abuse can also arise in relation to a person's sexual rights and reproductive rights. And so we wanted to talk about this topic today to have an understanding about the extent to which women and girls with disability are denied their sexual and reproductive rights. And that fits into how the Royal Commission is looking at violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disabilities. This is something you've looked at a lot. So what can you tell the Royal Commission about the nature and the degree to which there is interference with the sexual and reproductive lives of women and girls with disability in Australia? And some of the areas where there's that interference with the rights?
Okay, so I guess, first of all, I'd like to say that having been in my position as CEO of Women with Disability Australia for almost 25 years, that women and girls with disability consistently state, and always have done, that they see that their sexual and reproductive rights as one of the most urgent and unaddressed issues that they face.
And why is that?
So you talked before about in what ways are women and girls with disability denied their sexual and reproductive rights? And I could probably talk about this for two days, but for the purposes of, you know, trying to make the most of the time. So things like, I talked before about generally what we mean by sexual and reproductive rights, and importantly, individual choice and informed decision-making. So if we look at women and girls with disability and we look at some of the ways that their rights are denied in this way, we can go through things like forced and coerced sterilisation, forced contraception or limited choices around contraception, denial of sexual expression, poorly managed birth and pregnancy, forced and coerced abortion, termination of parental rights, denial of marriage or alternatively forced or coerced marriage, exclusion from sexual and reproductive health information, education, services, screening, everything from things like breast and cervical cancer screening, bone density screening, menopause services, to name just a few. I said before about, you know, the denial of the right to sexual expression, exclusion from legislation and policy frameworks that are actually and services that are designed to address gender-based violence. And one thing I would like to say that has been a very common theme in my role that I've seen is that women and girls with disability are often seen only in the context of their impairment. So they're not actually seen as women first. They're seen as their disability or their impairment first. And that can often mean that they don't get access. They're not necessarily even seen as sexual beings. And so often denied basic things like, you know, screening for domestic and family violence. So, but I wanted to add it. I could talk about all of those things in detail, but I think that one of the things that I really wanted to stress this morning and to make absolutely clear is that two of the most critical issues in the context of the denial of sexual and reproductive rights for women and girls with disability are forced sterilisation and forced contraception. And the reason that I wanted to pick out those two issues particularly, not to trivialise any of the others by any means, but the very fact that it is 2021, we live in a wealthy country, and yet it is still completely legal to sterilise a girl on the basis solely of her impairment. And it is, in the absence of a life-saving emergency, I should make clear, and it is also perfectly legal to sterilise an adult woman with disability, you know, without true and informed consent.
Right. So can I ask you some questions about this? And we're trying to get Linda Steele back on, and this is an area where Linda's done a lot of research and looked at the issue. So just for people following us, can I step back? And when we're talking about sterilisation and contraception, sterilisation may involve a surgical procedure to render a woman infertile.
That's right.
There may be a range of different procedures, medical procedures, that could enable that to occur.
Yes.
And when we're talking about contraception, we're talking perhaps about medical or drug use to manage a woman's reproductive menstrual cycles and reproductive capacity.
That's correct.
When we're talking about forced and using that adjective, we're looking at circumstances where the woman herself has not made the decision to be sterilised. So it's the absence of the woman's consent to undergo the medical procedure, be it a surgical procedure or consent to the medication. Am I right in understanding that?
And of course, there's lots of terminology, forced, involuntary, therapeutic, non-therapeutic, authorised, non-authorised. At the end of the day, when we talk about forced sterilisation, it is about the performance of a procedure, you know, which results in a permanent loss of reproductive capacity where in the absence of the friend informed consent of the individual who undergoes that procedure. And that means, and that includes instances whether that consent has been authorised by a third party, such as a parent, a court, legal guardian, tribunal, judge, without that individual's consent.
Can I ask you some questions about that? Again, just so people following us will sort of see the steps. So a person, a woman or a young woman with disability might consent to a particular procedure, and it's important that she has informed consent. When we're talking about forced sterilisation or forced contraception, we're talking about where that decision-making is substituted. So somebody comes in to make the decision.
That's right.
And that process of decision-making can either really translate or make the situation about medical decisions or legal decisions, it seems. So a doctor might say, this is in the woman's best interests to undergo a procedure that will render her infertile and never capable of having children. So a doctor could make that decision. It could be that the parents of the young woman with disability seek the assistance of a medical practitioner for that procedure to be done. But there's also the legal side of it. And Linda's covered this in her articles, but sometimes courts are asked to make decisions that authorise the medical practitioner to perform that particular procedure. And we've seen historically the courts having a role in stepping in and making the decision. And Linda's talked about this in some of her articles. But what I want to ask you about is, in your experience, how do judges know that this is going to be a decision that should be made if it's forced? So when you're talking about forced, you're talking about taking away the consent if somebody else is making that decision for them. I'm interested in how, you know, how do, how do, do you know how judges go about it? And I'm not asking you from a legal perspective, but I'm asking you from your experience of working with women and girls. Like, what's your perception of how courts do this?
So really, you know, the courts, there's really four, if I could group it into four sort of themes, that why judges and courts have actually approved or authorised the sterilisation of often very young girls, often before they have even commenced puberty, or gone through puberty or commenced menstruation. There's probably four main areas. One is sort of like, really a eugenics-based argument in a sense. It's about the fear of women with disability reproducing more, you know, children with disability. That is a very, quite, that's been a quite common reason. The fear of like, oh, well, we better get this young woman sterilised because, you know, she has a 50, she has a genetic condition with a 50% chance of it being passed on. However, it is very rare that you would see such a decision being made for a young girl without a disability with a genetic disorder. So, so the, so it's very, that's one, the genetic argument about not wanting to, you know, women with disability to have more children with disability. There's an assumption that that's the case, whether it's not necessarily the case. And then the next theme, I would say, is what I call for the good of the state, the community, the family, services, et cetera, which is essentially about burden of menstrual management, burden of care. And that is a really, really common theme that has run through reasons why courts have actually approved sterilisation for young girls with, largely with intellectual disability, but not only. And so.
Can I just, on that, can I ask you, and I think Linda Steele is now on the phone.
Yes, I am.
Jump in, but Caroline, and I'm sorry, it just makes it a bit tricky, but Caroline, that issue around the sort of menstrual management and suppression, looking at Linda's articles and the history, that raises two issues. One issue is an assumption that young women with disability can't manage menstruation. And secondly, that rather than looking at alternatives to a sterilisation procedure that will render that young woman infertile is at sort of like an easy, it's seen in the literature as sort of, that's the easy way. Let's just get it all done in one go. Is that, that's what you're talking about? Sort of, it's just easier and neater and cleaner and not as messy? So let's just do it in one go.
But it's also, you know, the, that sort of underpinning all of that is this, you know, view that women with disability are a burden, that they're somehow less than human. So I wanted to, like, if I look at, give an example, you know, in, from some of the comments made by judges around reasons. And often when we talk about sterilisation as a way of stopping young girls, you know, going through menstruation, these have been sole reasons, this sole reason why some of these young women have been sterilised. So one judge said, oh, menstruation will be yet another hazard and perhaps mitigate against her chances of being adopted should her mother die. Another one. Sorry.
Right, Caroline, just a little bit of background noise, and I'm sorry, that's a little.
Sorry, that's because I'm, yeah, not permitted in my building because of a fire drill. Sorry.
All right, that's all right. So Linda, can I just ask if you're outside, just to pop on the mute button?
Yeah, sure. And you'll tell me when you'd like to.
And I'll let you know when to bring you in. Or Caroline, if you want Linda to come in at any point, let us know. We've just got to be, you know, the whole world on fire drills, technology and the like. We'll just go with the flow this morning on this.
Oh, absolutely. Usually when I'm doing something like this, the council turns up outside to, you know, drill jackhammers or something, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's been an online hearing that hasn't had a leaf blower, a garbage truck, a jackhammer or something else, so.
Helicopters.
All were happy. So it's absolutely fine. So earthquake, we've had an earthquake, that's true.
So there's also other reasons, you know, judges have said, well, caring for her is an owner responsibility on her parents, and sterilisation would make the task of caring for her somewhat less onerous. And it will also make it easier for her carers if they had one less medication to administer. So, you know, there's many, and many of these things. One thing that, and again, just to give another quick example, you know, a statement made by a judge, it would be wiser to avoid problems rather than to wait and see if she copes with menstruation. Surely there is no need for her to suffer the problems that may arise with menstruation. So this is, you know, this is that sort of second theme about burden, and there's some examples there. The other one is a sort of, the next one is sort of a two-pronged one, which is about notions of incapacity. So one is incapacity for parenthood, right? And there's a, again, I'm talking here about reasons why, that have been used to sterilise, you know, young women and girls with disability. So, well, she's never going to have a child. She doesn't need a uterus, she's not going to miss it, she's never going to have a child, you know. If she had a child, it'd be an absolute disaster. So that's sort of assumed incapacity for parenthood. Let's just get rid of it all together and we don't have to worry about that. The next thing is linked to incapacity to parenthood is the notion that incapacity to develop and evolve. So in these contexts, courts have actually, you know, seen that sterilisation is like, you know, she's only got the mind of a two-year-old, so we might as well just get it done, sterilise it, you know. But, and that has been a really, again, a really common theme. Again, to quote from a judge, "There is no prospect she will ever show any improvement in her already severely retarded mental state." So in this context, incapacity is assumed to be permanent, as in that the individual has no capacity to actually develop or evolve. And so that's another rationale that's been used. And the last one that I'll talk about is actually, and this goes to forced contraception as well, but is about prevention of sexual abuse. That has been a really common theme in sterilisation authorisations by courts and tribunals. And there's some really horrible, horrible things that have been, you know, stated in this context. Things like, so this is a case where, one case where approval was given for the sterilisation of a 16-year-old disabled girl with her attractive looks forming part of the reason. So the judge said, "It is unlikely that she'll ever have the capacity to understand and voluntarily enter into a sexual relationship. It is however well documented that disabled children are particularly vulnerable to sexual abuse, and she's quite an attractive girl." And another one, just quickly, along the same lines. "It's unlikely she'll ever have any form of relationship involving sexual intercourse. She could of course be the victim of a sexual assault, and with her normal physical development and attractive looks, that cannot be discounted." So it is absurd, really, if you think about this logically. I mean, forced sterilisation, forced contraception will never overcome the risk of sexual abuse. Otherwise, every woman in Australia would be walking around, you know, having been sterilised.
Can I bring Linda in at this point? So Linda, in terms of those areas that Caroline has discussed and those extracts from the court decisions, is to actually get to a court or tribunal, it does require somebody. is to actually get to a court or tribunal, it does require somebody to make an application to approach the court or tribunal. And looking at your research, Linda, the people who approach the courts or the tribunals for these decisions are the parents or medical, uh, and health practitioners? I- is that usually who makes the applications?
Um, yes, uh, I think there might have been in one or two instances with children of a, of a guardian or um, worker in a school, um, a residential school, this is in the eighties or nineties, but then otherwise with adults, uh, yes, it might be a parent who is still involved in, um, uh, personal care or it could alternatively be a guardian who applies because, um, yeah, this consent to sterilisation is not within the scope of guardians' authority, it needs to be approved by the, a tri- guardianship tribunal or, um, you know, the family court or the Supreme Court.
And, and there must be surely a process for, for the judges or the tribunals to make these decisions. And, uh, it seems that an approach based on working out what the person's best interests are has been the way to guide the decision-making. Now, what does applying a best interest approach mean for the woman or girl who's going to be subject to a, a medical procedure such as sterilisation where she's not making the decision but somebody else is? Linda, can you tell us a little bit about how best interests work and you probably anticipate where I'll be going next and that is a human rights-based approach compared to a best interest approach?
Yeah, yeah, so I guess I just preface the discussion of the different tests by saying that, um, ultimately, um, allow, allowing sterilisation when it's not, uh, consented to by the individual, um, is seen by many as a form of violence. Because generally, uh, if we think about the definition of criminal assault, uh, in law or the kind of common understanding of what illegal violence is, it's about when someone does something to you that you haven't agreed to. Um, now obviously in law there are some exceptions and one exception is where, um, someone else is legally authorised to give that consent. But, um, that legal authorisation by someone else, uh, relies upon the assumption that the individual herself is incapable of consenting and a second assumption that it is, um, legitimate to give that role to someone else. So if we begin from the starting point that non-consensual sterilisation, sterilisation that isn't consented to by the individual is a form of violence, it's a form of violence, it's allowed by law, but it's, it's still violence. Um, then the issue of whether one test or other is better, whether, um, you know, kind of dressing up a test in human rights, whether we train judges to be really well versed in, in disability and disability rights, whether we train lawyers, um, all of those issues, um, are, are kind of irrelevant to some extent if we see sterilisation per se as violence. Because, um, the more that we try to improve the procedural, um, framework of, of that sterilisation, it's simply further embedding that violence in legal process and further, uh, exacerbating the complicity of uh, law of, um, courts in enabling that violence to occur. Um, so turning to, I guess, the two, um, different tests, the best interest test, um, it has been criticised, uh, in many different contexts in relation to people with disability, in relation to children, um, historically in relation to the way in which those kind of paternalistic ideas of we know best also played out in relation to First Nations people. And the idea of best interest is that because someone is considered to lack the capacity to um, take care of their own welfare and, and health and, and safety, that someone else should be able to step in and make some kind of reasoned judgment about what would be, um, the, the best set of circumstances or the best intervention for someone. And in the context of, um, people with disability and, and children in relation to, um, sterilisation, that idea of best interest has been about taking, taking the individual in their current circumstances, um, and determining, uh, it's current imperfect circumstances in the sense of perhaps having a lack of access to services or support or their family having a lack of access to support. And in the context of that, working out what is the best, that, in the court's view, the best way to alleviate, um, perceived issues of care, of personal hygiene, of safety, um, particularly for parents or disability services. Um, and that question of best interest is a very individualised question. So it's not taking a step back and saying, hang on, how come this individual is in these circumstances where they might need some additional support? Um, and, and how structurally what has failed this person or the family? Or secondly, taking a step back in questioning, you know, what, what stereotypes or what, um, ideas around uh, women and girls with disability, sexuality or their menstruation are informing our, um, assumptions that sterilisation is something we need to consider. So the best interest is kind of a, um, an empty concept that has been referred to as being capable of being filled by whoever is, um, making that, that judgement. Uh, and interestingly though, the idea of best interest is very, um, uh, subjective in terms of, um, it's ableist but also gendered. And there's an interesting, a comment made by the judges in Marion's case, which is the kind of leading high court decision on a non-therapeutic, uh, sterilisation of girls with disability, where they say that, you know, the fact that we're considering best interests in relation to sterilisation means that, um, uh, that it is potentially, uh, the procedure that could be in the best interest of a girl. But another procedure, we wouldn't, we couldn't even comprehend it ever being in the best interest. And they use the example of a child, one, a parent wanting to cut off the foot of their child to facilitate begging and making money. And so the best interest operates at that individual level of he's a girl before the court, what's going to be in their interest? But there's a prior kind of, um, structural assumption that, um, that it is possible that sterilisation could be in the best interest of a girl as compared to other procedures. Obviously, the example of cutting off a foot is perhaps a bit, um, facetious of the court to, to use that as an example, but we can think of, you know, the many other personal care and, and support needs that, um, women and men and, and boys and girls, uh, people of any gender, um, with disability might, might need across their lives. And there is no explicit legal, um, optional or legal kind of doctrine around enabling various other bodily processes and bodily organs and parts to be removed. Um, there's something particular about menstruation and sexuality of women and girls with disability that, that, um, makes this even possible for us to legally consider.
So, so Linda, can I, can I ask you, I, I know we're using the distinction forced, uh, unforced or consent as therapeutic and non-therapeutic, so there's different adjectives that we can use to describe. But will there be cases where, uh, women with disability may require a medical procedure that may assist them address health issues? Are there circumstances where there is any role for a court or a guardianship tribunal to make these decisions at all?
Um, so there's the possibility that sterilisation will be a by-product of surgery to address a serious medical condition such as cancer, uh, and so that is, um, a possibility, although it's a very rare, um, possibility. Um, but otherwise, the, the, um, no, the, the idea is that if someone cannot give their free and informed consent to have, um, you know, parts of their body removed or to have bodily processes, um, restricted in some way in relation to, um, reproduction, sexuality, that, um, that no one else should be able to make that decision on their behalf.
So if somebody said, oh, well, why don't we look at this as an absolute last resort, would that be consistent with, uh, a human rights approach that has to be just last resort?
Um, no.
Just substituting best interest.
No, so, yes, yeah, all those tests allow, uh, yeah, again, that idea of what test we use is really kind of stepping in after, um, and kind of bypassing, stepping in after a more foundational question of, hang on, why is the law even, you know, involved in these really intimate and personal, um, experiences for women and girls, that are things that, um, you know, are not generally, um, shared publicly or, or decided upon by other people in relation to other women. And then at a time when, you know, we're seeing more focus in relation to women without disability around issues of women's autonomy, so, you know, law reform in relation to sexual consent and decriminalisation of abortion in crimes act legislation at the same time as abortion and sterilisation just keeps on going in, um, disability-specific legislation. And, and I should also, I just wanted to add one thing, sorry, before we go on to what Caroline was noting around the reasons for sterilisation. And, um, I think, uh, we're seeing particularly in the context of guardianship legislation, which is seen as, because it emerged out of kind of deinstitutionalisation, it's seen as, um, supported, sorry, substituted decision-making and to support people to kind of live in their community. And obviously we, we can, um, critique that because it is self-facilitating legal violence. But, um, when sterilisation is being authorised in the context of guardianship legislation, there's also this idea that it's not, it's not necessarily, um, framed as being about protecting women or girls or alleviating a burden, but also facilitating their, um, community inclusion and participation and their ability to be involved in relationships. And I think that's quite a kind of perverse logic, um, because it, it overlooks the fact that this kind of, um, equality or inclusion that women and girls are apparently able to access through sterilisation depends upon this intervention that is removing parts of their body or stopping bodily processes that are actually, you know, core to how a lot of people, um, identify and, and, and experience their bodies in the world. Um, and certainly a lot of the testimony that, that Caroline and Witter have, have collected speaks to the way in which sterilisation actually, um, robbed from women who've had that done to them, you know, so, such core aspects of, of their identity and their ability to identify as women or, or humans, um, of, you know, relational beings. So, um, yeah, so I think that's just an added tension around, um, assume, potentially assuming that guardianship law is going to offer a more progressive uh, or, or, um, supportive framework for approving of these kinds of procedures.
I'll jump in there because this, this is, uh, an area that the Royal Commission will examine in some detail at a future hearing. And the Royal Commission is very interested in looking at models around guardianship and substituted decision-making and supported decision-making. So can I move from the topic of sterilisation? Because I know you both wanted to talk about a range of other aspects of sexual and reproductive rights, not just sterilisation. Uh, can I ask you to, to perhaps step a few paces back? And Caroline, you've talked about what some of the reasons might be for justifying sterilisation. And that is an inability to have a sexual or intimate relationship, an inability to be a parent or attitudes around women with disability even being sexual, uh, or capable of having relationships. Can I ask you to talk a little bit about some of those assumptions and how you see that having a bearing on when and how sexual and reproductive rights are interfered with, denied and not readily understood by everyone around the women and girls with disability?
Um, yes, well, uh, I also, um, you know, th- these are particularly major issues for women with disability, uh, in segregated settings. Um, particularly group homes and other forms of, uh, institutional residential settings.
So what's happening in those settings that you've.
So, um, well, basically, um, some, you know, some women with disability have lived in those institutions for years and years and years and they've never, they've never been given any choices. They're not even, um, and we have members who say, what's for sex? Or, um, never been able to, uh, they're not allowed to have a boyfriend or a girlfriend or, um, you know, they're not allowed to, uh, they're not even allowed to have privacy, um. So, and they're not, they're, they're, they're not allowed to make choices, uh, about what they would like to do. Um, you know, we've had, uh, and I wanted to, I wanted to also try and give some, some practical examples. So, um, you know, we've, we know of women with disability who, um, particularly intellectual disability in those types of settings who have been used by service providers to, um, to provide sex to, um, men with disability in other group homes, for example, as a way of addressing the, 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 the man's challenging behaviours, uh, as, as, as they were termed. Um, where women with dis- intellectual disability have been told, that's your boyfriend pushed inside the door and, um, uh, and been used in that way. Um, we know of, um, you know, women, uh, with disability in these settings not having access to money or being under financial management orders or whatever. And, and, um, basically, uh, being heavily exploited, um, in their, you know, local communities, um, where they, you know, if they provide sexual, you know, sex, uh, the man will give them a packet of cigarettes or, um, or a bag of lollies or, or ten dollars or something. Um, so we also have, um, examples of women, uh, um, with disability being forced, well, I use the word forced marriage. Forced marriage is usually understood in the concept of, um, faith-based communities. But, um, we have examples of women with disability being coerced into, um, marriage, um, enforced marriages, uh, where, so for an example, you know, woman with a mild intellectual disability living in the community, um, uh, you know, being coerced by a much, much older man to get married, um, and virtually being, um, it's a form of slavery. It's like, uh, you know, a sexual slave and, uh, to do all the housework and the cooking and, and everything. Um, and so this, it, it has not been researched at all in Australia as far as I'm aware. The, um, the issue of forced marriage in relation to women and girls with disability.
Caroline, how do these stories come to you? There's some people following this might say, if this is happening in Australia, that, that's astonishing.
Yes.
How is it that the stories are coming to you, but we're not hearing these more generally in the community? Uh, that people are forced into marriages and the nature of their relationship sort of renders them under that complete coercive control, which we were talking about yesterday in the hearing?
Well firstly, um, a lot of women with disability aren't believed and I'm sure that that was discussed yesterday. Um, uh, we have, you know, um, so having been in my job for twenty-five years, um, women with disabilities, Australia is an organisation that women with disability trust. Um, and so we get told stories in all sorts of ways. Um, often, you know, uh, it, it might be crisis, um, calls, it might be, uh, um, email, it might be, you know, a whole range of, of, uh, of ways. So, but, um, and, and obviously for some women with disability, that's been over a number of years to actually develop that rapport and trust where they're confident to explain and, and tell their story. Now, um, you know, some women with disability who have tried to report these types of issues to the police, uh, for example, have just been told, um, uh, she's making it up. Uh, you're mental, um, I have witnessed that myself supporting women with disability to try and report, uh, rape to, um, to the police where the first statement that comes out of the, the policeman's mouth was, um, uh, well, do you reckon she's making it up? They all make it up. So there's that sort of, um, so that denial for a start. And yes, um, I'm really sorry to say, this does happen in Australia. And it continues to happen in Australia. And, um, and I think. And I think that one of the things if we talk about segregated settings, group homes, et cetera. After deinstitutionalisation from the big um institutions, you know, some of these, some of these places have. Um, it's, it's, uh, they're out of the public view, um. You know, there's no public scrutiny, um, they might, some of these group homes might be up the back of some dirt road out in a country town somewhere. Um, and so, uh, you know, the 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 situation for women and girls with disability living in segregated. Um, uh, residential institutions, but, you know, it's just, um, it's just horrific.
Is there a way forward and, uh, these are very distressing. Circumstances to talk about. And Caroline, you've carried this for so many years.
Yes.
But you remain optimistic, don't you, that there can be better inclusion?
Yes.
Better respect and recognition for wo- for the rights of women and girls. Where do we head?
Okay, so I want to say one thing, yes, I'm optimistic, however, I'm also very, very angry. Because, um, and I know, you know, we don't want to get into the nature of, um. Every sort of international human rights treaty and all the rest of it, however, um, since two thousand and five. Australia is a signatory to seven international human rights treaties, and since two thousand and five, every one of those treaty monitoring bodies have. Strongly recommended that the government uh introduce national uh legislation to prohibit. Sterilisation of children, all children, without um accepting a life-saving emergency. And uh to prohibit the sterilisation of adults with disability without their prior free and informed consent. Um, except in the absence of a life-saving emergency like, um, so, uh, and yet. Um, we have done things like, uh, we have lodged formal complaints against the Australian Government to the United Nations. Um, we have done, you know, held national forums of women and girls with disability to talk about. Their experiences of sterilisation and the impact and, um, and yet. Um, I was looking at a report the other day from nineteen ninety where a forum was held with. Women and girls with disability in Victoria and the, and one of the participants said, I think there should be a sterilisation. Law. I think there should be a law um that goes into parliament that stops the sterilisation of. Women and girls with intellectual disability. And I was thinking, it's thirty one years later and we are still asking for the same, however. It's been very firmly backed by international human rights uh law. But not only international human rights uh monitoring bodies, but also the World Medical Association, the. Um, International Federation of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, um, and yet it is absurd. It, and if we look at something like, sorry, I'm raving on a bit bit now, feel free to say shut up, Caroline, um, but.
No, keep, keep, keep going, I will, I'll jump in, apply my protective interruption, but. I did want to ask you about this because your material's got this aspect of being angry and. Saying how many more international rights can we have? But at the same time, you are optimistic, so I think the optimism comes in terms of what you think based on your experience could be done. And part of this isn't it about translating these rights into A- Australian law and practice? And into how we work as a community, is that, that's what I'm reading in your material?
And, um, definitely, and so, um, it's like. If we talk about moving forward, if we talk about a human rights approach, um, you know. One of the issues that's been really annoying about the whole sterilisation matter. Um, is that it's just been bogged down for year after year after year after year about, you know. Legalistic debates about who can sterilise, you know, who can authorise it for whom, under what circumstances, in what jurisdiction? Blah, 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 and it's actually not, it's not a matter for, um. It is, it is unlawful. You can't do it if a per- if the, if a woman doesn't consent. You simply can't do it. And so, um, I would like to think that, um, if we're talking about a human rights approach. To women and girls with disability in relation to their sexual reproductive rights, well. They, they need to be able to, we need to be able to enjoy the same rights as all other women and girls on an equal basis. Um, it is, um, uh, you know, I mean, I can't imagine what it would feel like, um. You know, to have, for a non-disabled woman to have, um, a third party making decisions about. What contraception she's going to take. We have women with disability who have been on. Um, inject long-acting injectable contraceptives like Depo-Crevira injections. Um, put on it when they were fifteen or fourteen, still on it now at nearly fifty. With no clinical indication whatsoever, um, but, uh. Been told that, um, things like, oh, it's the flu injection. So some women with disabilities, in- intellectual disabilities, I'm talking about largely here, have been told that it's the flu injection. Others have been told that it's, um, oh, this is an injection all nice ladies have, all nice ladies have this injection. So when we're talking about forty, you know, you know, a woman nearly fifty. Being put on an inject- long-acting injectable contraceptive that has huge, um, problems. Uh, with side effects, particularly when you're looking at the fact that it's often combined with psychotropic medications. Um, for that long, now, you know, there, there's, there's women miss out on, um, uh. Well, Depo-Crevira can do things like, um, mask menopause. It can also cause early menopause. I have cases of women with disability complaining of being in back pain for months and months and months and, um. And being told it was because they were obese, um, and they needed to exercise more. And then, and then us having to fight to say, well, when was the last time this woman had a bone density test? Given the fact that she's been on con- these injectable contraceptives forever. Oh, no, never had one of those. Go and get the bone density test, the woman's riddled with osteoporosis. Um, and so. These are the sorts of things that, um, you know, that I'm angry about, still angry about, but. If we're talking about a human rights approach, we just want what all other women have, um. And that is autonomy over our bodies. Um, the right to make our own decisions about what happens to our bodies, um. And, sorry, would you like me to keep going?
I just wonder at this point, I'm just mindful of the time and, uh. And I think that the commissioners might have some questions that they might want to ask. I'll ask the commissioners if they've got any questions at this point. And then, uh, hopefully Linda's still on the line. But we might come back after the commissioner's questions just to wrap up on a way forward. We've talked about this being the beginning of a conversation, not the end of the conversation, so I'd be keen to hear from both of you. How do we keep the conversation going so that we can think about our way forward? So tapping into the. Optimism, Caroline, even if it's just a little tiny slither of optimism, how do we move forward? So commissioners.
Yeah, uh, if it's okay, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions. I'll start with Commissioner Galbally. Do you have any questions?
And thank you, um, very much, um, for coming forward today and I, I'd like to ask you, um. Carolyn, about, you you touched on group homes and segregated settings. And painted a picture of, um, it almost, you know, being. Hard to get one's head around. I wonder if you could go into that in more detail, um, about women. And girls, because there are girls living in in these settings. And what this means for them about being able to be women, you know, in the way that you've, um, described. Thanks.
Um, thanks, Commissioner, um, obviously segregation by its very nature. Segreg- you know, particularly when we're talking about living environments, um. Open, the, women and girls with disability in those settings are, are, uh, at at particular risk. Of, um, uh, interference in, um, uh. In the sexual and reproductive rights. In fact, they're not even seen as women, um. They're seen as residents, um, and, uh, as I said before, there, it is. Um, we know anecdotally, there has been some research in Australia, not very much, um. That, um, menstrual suppression and and uh enforced contraception is 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 widely used. In these types of settings. And it gets back to this issue I said before around, um, uh, burden of. Um, you know, being women with dis- and girls with disability saying, being seen as burdens of care. It is also, um, it's also quicker, cheaper, um, uh, to just have. Women with disabilities in these settings on, you know, these types of drugs because they can also, um. Uh, I'm not a doctor, but they can also, um, suppress, you know, sexual desire. Um, and so it's, uh, I I would also, i- if it's okay. Uh, like to ask Linda if she wanted to, um, answer some of that question in relation to. Can she hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you, Carolyn. Um, yeah, I I guess just very briefly, um, agreeing with what Carolyn has said. Uh, that, yeah, that that the seg- the segregated setting itself is the problem and, um, and then. A whole other layer of problems compound with the fact that people with disability are being segregated for the rest of society. And that segregation is. In where people live or work or or study, but also in our legal systems as well, but. In terms of the segregated residential setting, there was a, um, Victorian Senior Practitioners Report, uh, a few years ago now. That looked at menstrual suppression in disability services or I think disability residences and. And one of the things that observed is, uh, that study found, sorry, was that, um. When when women were on menstrual suppression, a lot of them were also subject to other restrictive practices, so. The, the interventions in their reproductive and sexual lives, which is one part of this. This way in which their lives more broadly were being controlled and limited and that, and and restrictive practices, uh, guardianship laws. Were a big part of, a big part of that as well, um, yeah, so I'll stop there because of the noise, sorry.
And, um, Commissioner Galbally, I'd also say that there's no, um. That there's no regulatory authority that actually requires, uh, monitoring. Um, of the use of these types of drugs in, uh, these types of service settings. So, um, because, uh, there are, um, they're not always necessarily seen as a chemical restraint. Um, uh, and I don't want to sort of go too far down that path because that brings in. Um, a whole raft of other kind of, um, uh, issues that we don't have time to discuss, but. Um, segre- you know, segregated settings are a dangerous place. Um, and I, for, uh, for all people with disability, quite frankly, and I'm sure that some of the stuff that the. Royal Commission has heard to date, um, uh, would sort of support that. So in terms of, oh, sorry, I've, um, because I was just thinking, Kate, you asked me a question about moving forward, but. Um, is is that, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Um, yes, it does. The the only other question I had is that. You, and you've sort of answered it, that there doesn't sound like there's monitoring or record keeping and there's no research. Into this question in Australia of segregated settings. And, you know, forced sterilisation and and menstrual, um, intervention, there's, you know, there's not research or data. Collected as far as I can gather from your answer.
Um, in in relation to sterilisation, um, the only, uh, da- the data issue is just a nightmare. Um, one of the things that came out of the two thousand and fif- uh, two thousand and thirteen Senate Inquiry into. Uh, involuntary sterilisation of people with disability was, uh, an agreement to try to, uh, collect. Better data. And so, um, I think it was the Office of the Public Advocate in Victoria was given. Um, some money to actually start a project around that, um, the family court. Uh, um, didn't want to participate and so, um, it was only then. Uh, around, um, state and territory guardianship tribunals and their equivalents. And so what happens now is that every year there is, um. There is a, a one-page document placed on the Australian Guardianship, uh, the national website. That actually just gives by jurisdiction, um, the number of au- the number of authorisations, uh, sorry, the number of. Requests for, uh, sterilisation and the number of approvals. Unfortunately, that is only restricted to what's called adults with cognitive disability. That is not defined. Um, but what we do know, even from that very crude data, is between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty, there's been thirty one approvals.
Car- Caroline, just on that, we've included in the, uh, Tinder bundle for this session. Those one-page Australian sterilisation reports, so the commissioners have got that to see with each jurisdiction. Uh, sorry to jump in there, but just to let you know we've included.
And that doesn't tell us, um, of the, um, of the, the incidents in group homes.
No, so can I, could I jump in and I'm applying protective interruption to everybody today and I'm sorry about. About that. I'm conscious of the time and, um, and I'm also conscious of. The commissioners wanting to ask questions, but just also to hear the reflections of Linda and Caroline on the optimism.
Yeah, well, perhaps if, uh, I can ask Commissioner Mason and then Commissioner Bennett if they have a particular question they wish to put.
Um, no, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Bennett?
Um, thank you, uh, Carolyn, um, and Linda. Just going back to that reference about the tribunal data, which you've clarified, Carolyn. Is only cognitive disability adult sterilisation, um, for periods. The latest one from July. Uh, nineteen to twenty said that there were eight. And five of them were in the Victorian jurisdiction. So apart from the inadequacy of the data, which is the point that you've made and, you know. In addition to non-surgical, five of them in Victoria. Does this reflect the point that you've made that there is no national legislation and some states. Do have legislation preventing. There are three, four jurisdictions where there were no approvals given. Maybe Linda might know the answer to this, but, uh, four jurisdictions where it was approved and as I said, Victoria, five of the eight.
Um, I might pass that one over to Linda, but there is, um, obviously massive problems with that dataset, but Linda, do you want to?
Yeah, 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 thank you, yeah. So, um, I can't speak to the exact reasons in terms of Victoria, but, um. There are different legal tests for sterilisation, um, in the different guardianship jurisdictions and. New South Wales, for example, um, the tribunal needs to be satisfied that the treatment is the most appropriate form of treatment for promoting wellbeing. Um, and it's necessary to save life or prevent serious damage to health. Uh, in contrast, Queensland and South Australia, for example. Sterilisation can be authorised by a tribunal where it's medically necessary. Or where it's necessary for contraception or menstrual purposes where other, um, interventions are not, are not suitable, so there is a, a. Vast range in terms of, um, when sterilisation can be authorised. Again, we would say that, well, you know, whatever the test. It just shouldn't be authorised at all, but I just wanted to point out in terms of. But I just wanted to point out in terms of data that even though we might have some data from the Guardianship Tribunal around, um, you know, that kind of quantitative data of how many decisions are being made, that unfortunately, because the, um, sterilisation is authorised uh, by Supreme Court and Guardianship Tribunal and Family Court as part of the parent-patray jurisdiction, the, um, general principle of open justice, which we have across our courts to allow public access to court hearings and court decisions, um, is a longstanding legal principle that that principle of open justice does not apply in the parent-patray jurisdiction. It's at the discretion of the, the judge or, or the tribunal. And so we're not, a- and that's supposed to be because, you know, these jurisdictions are very protect, these jurisdictions are protective and it's private. But, but if we shift everything and say, no, hang on, th- these decisions are actually allowing violence to occur. They're not, they're not protecting women and girls from violence. Then I think it's, it's so important that we have more transparency around all of the decisions that are being made. Um, whether they're de-identified or not, that's another question. But, but to just simply have those numbers is not giving us that depth of detail about, you know, what kinds of, um, assumptions and ideas and, and knowledge around women and girls with disability held by individual judges or, or enabled by psychological ex- expertise or, or, you know, legal principles. You know, w- we're not getting that level of information and that's really important to have.
Thank you.
Uh, Chair, I assume you have no questions?
No, no, I don't.
So ca- can we, um, end on your suggestions or recommendations about a way forward? Even if those are further matters that need more careful attention, research or consideration. So Caroline, can I ask you to comment on that? And Linda, perhaps if you could just let me know if you agree with, uh, Caroline, if there's anything extra you want to add.
Um, obviously, this is a massive area and I would also like to point out that, um, it's also an issue that affects men and boys with disability, but obviously not probably to the same extent as, as women and girls. Um, so, um, it is, it is a massive area to properly, properly unpack. And, um, and yet it has been an area that has been totally denied. Um, it has been an area that, uh, we can't even, w- w- we can't even get into our national policy frameworks. Um, uh, uh, and when I, so that the frameworks to advance and promote the rights of people with disability, so Australia's Disability Strategy or, um, the National Plan to Reduce Violence Against Women and Their Children, although I'm hopeful there because there is a new one, um, about to be, uh, developed. Or in Australia's framework for, um, for protect, protecting Australia's children. So it's, it's like you can't even, you know, it doesn't, you can't talk about sterilisation or menstruation or l- these types of forms of violence. Um, uh, they're not even recognised in our national policy frameworks. So, but one of the things moving forward, obviously law reform is critical. And I will keep badgering on and I will say that there is absolutely no reason for Australia to keep stalling on law reform in the area of, uh, forced sterilisation. Um, and, uh, ending segregation. And I'm not talking about tomorrow. I know that people can get very distressed if you start talking about, you know, closing down, um, you know, schools or, um, special schools as they're called, or, um, you know, group homes or whatever. What I'm talking about here is, is one of the things, uh, that Chair, um, Sackville said at the very beginning of this Royal Commission was that what we needed is a social transformation. That we needed this Royal Commission to actually be looking towards a social transformation. And so in terms of some of these issues, particularly ending segregation, we're talking about what do we need to do as a country to start transitioning away from segregation of people with disability and stop treating them as other? Um, I think one, the, I could, you know, go into really specific detail about training and, um, financial support and more independent advocacy and all those sorts of things. But the other thing I want to get in, I want to get this said before we finish, is, um, Australia has a, has a responsibility to provide redress to those women and girls who were sterilised without their consent. Um, uh, that we have some members who tol, were told they had, were having their appendix taken out and didn't even know until they wanted to have children. Um, we've got members who were sterilised at the age of seven because they had a mild vision impairment. Um, uh, and so one of the things that is really important about redress, and it's not just about money and compensation, it's about, you know, all the things that make up redress. So guarantees of non-repetition, you know, apologies, um. One, the, the, the very important thing about redress is that it is, it sends a very clear message to the community about what's not acceptable. Um, and so if we're talking about changing attitudes towards women and girls with disability and so on, um, I see that we cannot move forward unless we are prepared to address the past. Um, well, we can, but we have to address the past. Linda, do you want to add any, a couple of things there? Because I don't want to, um, you know, run out of time and not have you say something.
Oh, yes. Well, I mean, I agree with everything, uh, everything Carolyn said. And, yeah, just to emphasise the, the importance of ending that segregation in, across society, in, in residential and school et cetera settings, but also in the justice system. And that includes repealing, um, substitute decision-making laws and also addressing, um, how substitute decision-making is enabled through the, the court jurisdictions as well. It's not just all about the legislation. Um, and, and definitely the issue of redress has been, um, about responding to uh, injustices and violations, but also it is about preventing violence moving forward. And if we look at transitional justice frameworks, if we look at the UN Van Bovend principles on, um, human rights violations and reparations, it's always framed as being more than simply that kind of legal understanding of remedies where you're just responding to something that's happened in the past. And it's about that connection between the past, um, what's happening now and, and a better future. So it, it's certainly something that fits within the Commission's, um, uh, aspirations of transforming society and of preventing, uh, violence moving forward.
Okay. Can I thank both of you? Uh, I, again, and I said this yesterday, I feel like we've just sort of started the discussion. So it will certainly be an ongoing area of interest for the Royal Commission. But can I thank you both very much for your time and, uh, sharing these experiences with us today?
Yes. And I would like to add my appreciation to both of you. I know it's not necessarily easy to give evidence in a forum such as this. And we all, on behalf of all of the commissioners, we appreciate that you've been prepared to do that and to share your experiences with us. We're also very grateful for the very detailed written material, printed material that we have received, that we have read and will continue to read very carefully. That's a very important contribution to our work. So thank you very much for your appearance today, for giving both the oral evidence and the documented print material that we have received. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair and Commissioners.
So Chair, that concludes, and Commissioners, that concludes the public aspect of the hearing. And we're now going to move into the closed and private session. But before doing so, we've circulated the proposed, uh, list of tender documents to the parties. And Chair provided to you a list of the documents that we seek to tender. Um, and we're happy for you to make that order and we'll publish the tender documents on the website shortly.
Yes, well, um, I'll, I understand that there's no objection to the tender, that the tender has been distributed to all parties with leave to appear. And on that basis, I'll admit into evidence, uh, the documents that are identified in the material that has been circulated to the parties given leave to appear. And I take it that is bumble A, bumble C and bumble Z.
That's right. There's, the second is, uh, that while we're now going to the private session, this hearing will continue, hopefully in person, uh, towards the latter part of March next year in Hobart COVID permitting. And so Commissioners, I don't, uh, ask you to make any directions in relation to the receipt of any additional material at this stage or to prepare council assisting submissions. What we had in mind is that we'll do that in a thorough way when we've had the second part of the hearing. But we do encourage anyone who's followed the proceedings over the last day or so, who wishes to share their stories with the Royal Commission, to please come forward and we'd welcome to hear people's experiences. We can do so in a form that keeps the information private. Uh, you can share your experiences with the Royal Commission through submissions and the information is available on the Commission's website. There's also the option of applying for a private session with the Royal Commission. So Commissioners, our next hearing will be on the eighth and ninth of November. And perhaps it's timely in light of the comments made by Ms Fromada and Dr Steele that we're going to focus on the Convention of the Rights of Persons with Disability, uh, Disabilities. And we're going to look at how the convention and those international human rights law can make their way into Australian law, practice and community attitudes and expectations. So that's the next proposed hearing. So Commissioners, from this point onwards, the proceedings will close and we will welcome the lesbian, bisexual, transgender, intersex, queer and questioning and asexual plus, uh, participants who will, uh, join us in the closed session. Thank you, Commissioners.
Uh, thank you, Ms Eastman. Just before we conclude the open, uh, hearing, I would like to thank everybody who has been involved in preparations for this hearing. And of course, the witnesses, uh, who have appeared and given evidence that we have heard over, uh, yesterday and this morning. These are extremely important issues. They're also issues that are not necessarily easy to talk about. And we appreciate, uh, the willingness of, uh, the people from, the witnesses from whom we have heard over the last day and a bit. And I want to thank also everybody within the Commission, uh, who's been associated with the preparation for and conduct of this hearing. We have been operating, as we all know, for a long time in the midst of a COVID nineteen pandemic that has altered the way in which we have to proceed. And it's a tribute to the commitment and the skill of everybody who's involved in preparing for and conducting these hearings that, uh, even given earthquakes, helicopters, uh, and everything else that we've had to endure, that they've been conducted so smoothly. So we do very much appreciate the work that has gone into the preparation and conduct, uh, of the hearings. Uh, we'll now adjourn and the proceedings will resume with the, uh, in-camera session. And as Ms Eastman has indicated, uh, there will be another hearing on the eighth, ninth and,
Eighth and ninth.
Eighth and ninth of, uh, no doubt.
And thank you, Chair. We'll just, um, for present purposes and the Commissioners adjourn just to reconstitute the hearing room and the arrangements. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.